Segundo, it's great to see you full house tonight. We're convening this open session. Madam Clerk, if you could please take roll call.
Councilmember Baldino.
Here.
Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Purstuck.
Here.
Mayor Protem Pimental.
Here.
Mayor Boiles.
Here. All right, thank you very much. We're gonna have the invocation led by Pastor Caleb O of the United Methodist Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilor Purstuck. Please arise.
Thank you, council members and city staff for another invitation to come and begin today's meeting with an invocation. It is certainly an honor and a joy to be a part of our city. And you know, when I signed up for this, I did not realize it was on election day. And so it is an extra honor to be praying for us today. So please join me in an attitude of prayer. Yeah, our loving and gracious God, we gather here on a very important day for not just our city, but truly our whole world. So help us all to be present, settle our nerves and comfort us in our fears and anxieties for the unknown and uncertainties that is before us today. Now we ask for your wisdom and your guidance for our council members and for all of us here. May we be open to your divine inspiration and act with integrity and compassion. Guide our leaders as they lead us forward into a new future. May our city of El Segundo grow more in our love and understanding for one another to prosper and excel in our endeavors and continue to create a safe space for all of us here. We give thanks to you, oh God, for the opportunity to serve our community. And in your loving embrace, we place our hopes and our dreams for El Segundo. Amen.
United States of America, and you are a republic of religious standards, one nation under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and justice for all.
Pastor O, I loved your message. Thank you very much for being here this evening. And Councilor Purstuck, thank you so much. All right, now is the time for special presentations. We have a very important one. We've got a retirement of a longstanding employee. As you can probably tell, it's the fire department represented so well here. And so we're gonna, we're gonna celebrate and honor the retirement of Fire Captain John Gritsmacher. And I'm gonna welcome up the chief to say a few words before we get started here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Protem and council members. I'm honored to present a 33-year veteran of the El Segundo Fire Department to you this evening. This fire captain represents incredible professionalism, a full career of commitment and service to our community, and one who exemplifies selflessness and courage. Not to leave you on the edge of your seats, but I will ask Battalion Chief Ryan Ali to introduce you to our highly revered fire captain.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem and the entire city council, thank you for having us. We know it's a busy night and we really appreciate this honor to recognize the person to my right here. Amazing fire career for Captain John Gritsmacher. But if you knew John Gritsmacher and you worked with him, he was never known as John or Captain Gritsmacher. He was simply known as?
Gritz.
Gritsy, Gritz. I actually forgot his name was John before I was gonna do this presentation. I'm like, oh yeah, his name's John. Tonight's bittersweet for me. It's bitter because we're saying goodbye to such an outstanding firefighter. But it's even more bitter personally for me because now I'm gonna be the oldest member at Fire Station One. So can I change your mind? Yeah, by a long shot. But it's sweet because Gritz, we're here to celebrate you in this well-deserved and happy retirement. I'm gonna briefly go over John's career highlights. It spans 33 years with the city of El Segundo. John was hired with the city in 1992 at the young age of 22. But before he got here, he was a paid-on-call firefighter with Manhattan Beach and a fire cadet with Beverly Hills, and then we stole him. During his time with the El Segundo Fire Department, John served the roles as a firefighter for three years, firefighter paramedic, 13 years, and a fire captain for the last 17 years. He's currently the captain on Engine 31, and he also leads our team of our Policy and Procedure Committee. He's held several assignments in his entire career here, but I want to talk about the tactical paramedic program that he started 17 years ago to assist our El Segundo Police Department brothers and sisters with their SWAT team. This was his most special assignment. John has a love for paramedicine. It wasn't unusual to see books of infectious diseases or trauma injuries on his nightstand over the years. He also was, always had a deep admiration for our police members. He combined these passions to create SWAT paramedics in our department, and to this day, I believe this is one of the most important programs in our department's 107-year history. This program ties us together with our police partners and increases the safety for us and the community. And as you can see from around the room, we have some ESPD members that hold Gritz in the same admiration. So thank you for being here, guys. On a personal note, to say Captain Gritsmacher has been an asset to our fire department would be grossly understated. His experience and deep knowledge of paramedicine and for the fire service is unmatched. But that's not what makes him so special. He's always calm, reassuring, reassuring voice in the most difficult stressful emergency situations. He is always dependable and gets the job done without asking questions. And maybe most importantly, he has always done the right thing and put the citizens of this city first. Finally, I ask some of our members that are here tonight to sum up Gritz in one word. Here's some of their responses. Devoted. Your head's gonna get big right now, so. Genius. Professional. Intelligent. Compassionate. Witty. Dependable. Masterful. Level-headed. I don't know if that's one word or two, but we'll give, I put a. Calm. Legend. And last but not least, irreplaceable. We will sorely miss his leadership and his friendship. Thank you, Captain Gritsmacher, for being such a dedicated professional firefighter for 33 years with the city of El Segundo. We are honored to have worked alongside you and we're lucky to have you this long. Well done. Congratulations. And he's gonna say a couple of words. I know you guys had a busy night, but he'll be short. I know he's a man of few words.
Trust me, it won't take long. No, I, I really appreciate all the nice words and it's been a great career. I couldn't have asked for, for anything different. I just wanna say thank you to everybody and especially for working with all these, these good people I've worked with. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Mayor Boiles, Mayor Protem, council members, would you please come down and we have a plaque, Mayor has a plaque for you. In honor of your incredible service here.
Legend.
Thank you very much. Is your family? Here we go, a couple of photos here. One more. Thank you so much. Very good. Congratulations.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it. Oops, sorry, buddy.
Congrats again. That's amazing. Thank you so much, Captain, and thank you, Chief. All right, next up, we have the American Indian Heritage Month proclamation that will be read by Councilor Baldino. And I believe Emily Atmore of DEI Committee will be here to accept. Yeah, there she is. All right, thank you. Councilor Baldino, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, whereas the city of El Segundo encourages and promotes strong, diverse, and inclusive communities that recognize and celebrate efforts to bring people together for a greater good. And whereas the city of El Segundo honors the Tongva people and the original inhabitants of El Segundo, who have been recognized by the state of California, the California General Assembly, and by the Los Angeles County with the depiction of Tongvoya women on the Los Angeles County seal. And whereas the city of El Segundo recognizes that as part of Los Angeles County, we occupy land originally and still cared for by the Tongba, the Tatvian, the Serrano, the Kitz, and the Kumash people. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and future, as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. And whereas National Native American or American Indian Heritage Month was first celebrated in 1976 when Congress proclaimed Native American Awareness Week. In November of 1986, President Reagan designated American Indian Week. In November of 1990, President Bush designated National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas the celebration of American Indian Heritage Month honors the culture, resilience, history, and legacy of indigenous peoples, the city of El Segundo is committed to cultural preservation, learning, and education, and values that uplifts all people. Now therefore, on this fifth day of November 2024, the mayor and the members of the council of the city of El Segundo, California, hereby proclaim the month of November 2024, American Indian Heritage Month, to recognize and honor the native and indigenous communities. And like the mayor said, we have Emily here from DEI. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you. I just wanna say thank you for recognizing this very important month for the Native Americans and the indigenous people in our community.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, let's do a photo. Thank you, Ms. Atmore. All right, we are on to public communications. Madam Clerk, how many comment cards do we have or communication card requests do we have? Seven. Okay, we're gonna limit it to three minutes each, please, and we will start with whoever you call first.
John Gasparian.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, City Manager. I'll be very brief tonight. I'm John Gasparian with American Reclamation, General Manager and Vice President. And we had the honor today of being recommended under item 10 for the commercial franchise, non-exclusive franchise recommendation. And I just wanted to express our appreciativeness and let you guys know we are here should you have any questions or any requests from us. And just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gasparian.
Stephanie Wong. Thank you for your time. I would like to request that the city also focus on requiring the Hyperion to build plastic or other containment structures over any tanks, outside pipes, equipment, and facilities as needed to prevent chemicals, leaks, liquids, and odors from escaping from the outside air. Please tell me when I've got one minute left. Any pipes that currently release airborne chemicals and gases or other liquids into the air, for example, the dump-shaped digesters, could also be repiped to direct the same back into a contained space. Liquids and odors do not need to be exposed or released into our air, but that is what is happening with the Hyperion's current physical setup. The Hyperion processing plant near the Imperial Avenue entrance has most of its horizontal pipes, tanks, grates, etc. in an open airspace that workers and tanker trucks can drive through. It seems it would be better if one could require the Hyperion to contain its toxic air at its own address instead of trying to monitor its negative impact on air quality. If they contain their chemicals, this helps to clean our air. We can kill two birds with one stone. For some people, there will be no acceptable minimal levels of chemical release. Zero release of chemicals is possible if basic containment structures and pipes are used to capture and contain these chemicals at the Hyperion's own location. If the Hyperion employs a special design group, such as the APC group, to oversee its facilities, design of the many technical sewage processes, it should be more than capable of coming up with a design to put a lid on it so we don't have to smell or suffer from exposure to the operations. I've tried to talk with the APC group. I was instructed to contact them and was met with silence. That is not acceptable conduct by an entity that has polluted our air for weeks and months on end. I also request that the city try to make the Hyperion plant physically accessible to residents so we can inspect the plant anytime their activities are disturbing our physical well-being. So we can pinpoint any improvements that could reasonably be made now to reduce its ongoing problematic operations. I would like residents to have the right to readily observe the plant, its processes, equipment, and observe daily routines for chemical detection with the guidance of someone like the superintendent of operations until the Hyperion no longer operates as a nuisance. Certain people are able to detect the presence of chemicals without the use of monitoring equipment. It's possible for people to identify the presence of debilitating chemicals just by standing or walking by the pipes and tanks of the Hyperion. And if we identify chemical leaks, we could ask for fixes or containment measures. Some ideas for better chemical containment have come from, from or after brief conversations with people closely connected to the AQMD and Hyperion plant, such as in the grit loading, this loads biosolids into trucks for hauling to another location. There's grit loading of biosolids into trucks to take it elsewhere. This is done in a structure where doors are supposed to be closed. Sometimes these doors are not closed. Solution, monitor with a security camera pointed at the doors to verify proper closing. Another suggestion is to have an alarm go off when the truck is present and the door is not closed as part of a fully monitoring process. Raw primaries, this holds the sewer before processing. Sewage is held in an area about the size of a football field. These tanks are about 30 feet, maybe 25 feet deep. There are covers, they, there are covers over these tanks that are supposed to stay closed. However, they are opened with clean with chemicals, which takes about three weeks, and there are no regulations about keeping lids closed at this time. And the cleaning of this huge space likely involves large amount of chemicals and exposures to whatever sewage residue is inside these tanks. The solution is to require tanks to be cleaned one at a time whereby remaining tanks remain shut. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Wong, thank you for doing that so quickly. I know there's a lot there. I'm gonna encourage, City Manager's gonna get with you and Elias Sessuna, Director of Public Works for the rest of your recommendations because we have a new consultant that's coming on board shortly.
I would love to get a copy of your statement, please. Perfect, thank you. I couldn't keep up with that.
You have a calling. If you ever need an opportunity to do some reading, like, I felt like I was listening to Two X Podcast. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you so much for being so thorough. In all seriousness, we will be following up with you, okay? Thank you.
Sheri Metcalf.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I'm here to speak about the trash hauling contracts that El Segundo wants to limit.
Ms. Metcalf, can you move the mic a little closer?
I guess that would be better, wouldn't it? I guess that would be better, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Sorry. I'm here to speak about the trash hauling contracts that El Segundo wants to limit. In other words, El Segundo would no longer be a city that allows a lot of different trash haulers into the city. My name is Sherry Metcalf. I was one of the original owners of a trash company named A&amp;A Waste and Roll Off Services, Inc., along with my husband, Bob Metcalf, and our partner, Tom Jagusis. I ran this company for 16 years, from 2000 to 2016. In 2016, we sold a company to Patriot Services, Inc., two brothers, John and Vartan, Coroglian, own and operate Patriot. In 2000, we started the business. It was our goal to provide great service to our customers, and I believe that we accomplished that. I love talking with our customers and the people who just needed advice on what sites been to order for their cleanup. In 2016, when we were going to sell, we wanted to find a smaller trash company that would provide the same great service that we did. When customers deal with smaller companies, they tend to get better service. I also think people feel like they are important and not just a number. When customers called us, they did not have to get transferred to more than one extension before speaking with someone. That is annoying. After selling our company to Patriot, I would sometimes talk to some of our previous customers on the phone or I'd run into them around town. I would ask them how they were being treated by Patriot. They all said they were very happy with Patriot's service. I was so happy to hear this from them. Mission accomplished. The reason I'm telling you all this is because I have heard that you want to limit some trash companies being able to do business in El Segundo. I have also been told that you're thinking about giving most of the contracts to some of the large trash companies. This means that Patriot would be one of those trash companies that would not be able to continue working here. Why would you want to remove a company that provides great service to its customers and at a better cost? You need to include Patriot as one of the trash companies working within your city. If not, in my opinion, it does not make El Segundo look like a city that, quote, "is a great place to grow your business or your family", which is stated on one of your websites. I hope that El Segundo does not become one of those cities that will only cater to the larger businesses instead of also respecting and wanting mom-and-pop businesses or smaller businesses to do business here. Working with large trash companies also means that the trash removal will cost a lot more. I have already received a quote for a piece of commercial property that I own here in town. It came from one of the companies that does business here, and it was three times more expensive than what I currently pay. Nothing has yet been completely decided concerning this issue, but I got this quote anyway. I would not be able to raise the rents to what they should be to cover this increase.
Ms. Metcalf, your time's up. I'm so sorry.
Okay. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much.
Deborah Dietz.
Deborah Dietz.
Greetings to the Council, Mayor. My name is Deborah Dietz. I'm a 40-year resident from El Segundo. My husband and I have been really happy living here, and we're recently retired from the City of LA. I am a retired public works landscape architect. So I have some sort of dutiful type of issues I wanted to bring up to the Council today. I know how hard it is to pull off community outreach with projects, and everybody seems to have an opinion, and everybody seems to want to pull things different ways. And believe me, I went through 20 years of it, so I've never been on this side of the table. This is a very awkward and funny place to be for me. But I do have 30 signatures of residents who agree with me, so I'm not alone in my opinion of Hilltop Basin area. That's a multi-generational park that has been really kind of a lone wilderness in town. We have many active recreational interests in town, as you know. You've got Little League and AYSO and all kinds of other agendas for every little inch of park space that we have. And one of the things that I wanted to warn you against is with all the development that's coming into El Segundo, that we don't overdevelop our open space. I mean, I have been asked to put recreational buildings into parks that had no park space in their communities. They were building them up and putting in more housing. And it's a very hard thing to do because everybody does have an opinion. But you've had meetings so far, I know, I found them in the county, I'm sorry, in the city website, by a group called the CPAC, which is the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. And they've held other meetings, and they said that they had community outreach, which we were not, the 30 that I mentioned, none of us were aware of. So the big issue is that nature really doesn't have a spokesperson. And these 30 people and myself are willing to be the spokesperson. And hopefully, depending on the future in this town with that program, I think we can be awesome spokespeople, and we can also make your jobs easier. So that's really what my intention is tonight, is to make sure you know you have an asset in the town. But we also really are gonna advocate for open space because it's needed in a big way. Like I said, I had 465 square miles of parks in LA. And this park is an unusually rare find. It is a, I'm not gonna go into that because that's not my job anymore. I don't have to sell you on the park being special, but I do have to let you know that we know it's special, and we're gonna try to make sure that it stays wilderness. Then the other thing I have is not so much in my line of work, but it is a concern of all of us. And that has to do with, as a citizen of the City of El Segundo, I request that you clarify a proactive emergency response plan for the acoustic weapons that were followed the summer of 2024 noise event. This happened in Lakewood at the SoFi Stadium. That location impacted Los Angeles.
I think we got the gist of it. Thank you very much.
Okay, I will follow up in writing. I will put that in writing. Thank you.
And if you'd like, the City Manager can follow up with you. Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Dietz. All right.
Ah, this writing is really small. Maurice Belinikoff, Montebello Trash.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to my comments in advance. My name is Maury Belikov. I am co-owner of Holloway Rubbish Service Company and also the president. My father started our company in November of 1949. So we have just completed 75 years of a family-owned business, which anybody that has a business knows that's pretty hard to do. I am second generation. I have third and fourth generation working in our business. We feel like we were the first to come up with recycling programs, and that's the way we've always operated our business. It's always been about recycling. In fact, recycling wasn't a word when Dad started. It was called salvaging. One of our customers in the beginning, I think it's around 1960, was Rolled Gold Pretzel. And before diversion was even known, we had them at 90%. So Dad's kind of responsible for creating a number that's very difficult to get to. As you are aware, you're expected to vote on something this evening, and it's limiting the haulers. I don't think that's a good idea, as the lady spoke earlier. We give top-notch service. Our customers don't even see our truck after 7 o'clock, and that's what they expect. What bothers me is that I turned in an RFP, and your staff and your consultant did not even offer us an interview, which makes absolutely no sense to me. So maybe this is a touche comment back at your staff. I don't believe that they understand the, what it takes to operate a business, especially a trash collection and waste recycling service in this day and age. We are gonna have a landfill crisis very soon, and actually, more companies are better. So I'm recommending to you, the Council, that maybe you do a little better research because this is, again, a little disturbing that your staff would not even consider a 75-year-old company in our experience. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
John. From Glendale. I don't want to mess up your last name.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Members, City Staff. My name is John Coroglian, and this is my brother, Vartan, and we are the proud owners of Patriot Services, Inc. We have been proudly serving customers in the City of El Segundo for over 14 years now. Our journey began when we bought a single route from a family member. Our journey, excuse me, later expanding to acquire A&amp;A Waste, previously owned by Bob and Sherry Metcalf, and then another small business hauler called Bay West Rubbish. During our tenure, we have grown into a reputable, solid waste and recycling collection company. Our success is rooted in our commitment to personalized service and our dedication to exceeding customer expectations. With this approach, we were able to gain more business organically, and today, we service over 25% of the commercial and multifamily customers in the city. We are consistently reinvesting in our business and the community by acquiring state-of-the-art equipment, including metal containers, carts, a brand-new collection vehicle that costs us over $400,000. We pride ourselves in our service and our ability to meet and exceed customer expectations and the ability and resources to assist the city to meet compliance thresholds set by the State of California. We have put together a team of professionals with the experience and knowledge to ensure all needs are met to the satisfaction of the city. We've been doing the job and have documented and made every effort to meet all the requirements to date, as well as commit to meeting the state and local requirements moving forward. We stand here humbly, asking the city to please consider Patriot Services, Inc., a small, family-owned business, a non-exclusive franchise agreement. We will be honored to continue our work in a community we cherish and love and to contribute to its ongoing success. Thank you for your consideration. Have a good night, and God bless you all.
Thank you, sir.
Eric Quintero.
Hi, good afternoon, Council. Thank you for having us here. My name's Eric Quintero. I'm with Waste Management. I want to first off thank city staff for what we believe was a very equitable and transparent RFP process. It was great communication from the staff along the process in itself to allow us to better understand what were the requirements for this particular proposal. Currently, WM services over 100 customers here in the City of El Segundo. Some of them include Mattel, Chevron, Lakers, just to name a few. We have great customer retention. It speaks volumes to the quality service we provide. We'll be here to answer any specific questions you may have, but we want to thank you all for the time for allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Those are all the cards I have.
Okay, that concludes public communications. City Manager, Daryl, Mr. George? Anything you'd like to follow up on?
Yes, Mayor, I do have a few comments on the speakers. The, as everyone knows, Item 10 on the agenda tonight has to deal with the trash hauling contracts, and we have a full staff presentation, so please stick around for that, and the Council will address that item, that issue on Item 10. Ms. Wong, thank you for the letter. I don't know if she's still here. We will take a look at that and respond to you. I know you made several points, and we actually have a highly regarded consultant, Dr. Stenstrom, who understands a lot of the technical details that you were getting into. And I'll make sure that he also gets a copy of your comments. Ms. Dietz, your two items, Hilltop Park and the noise emanating out of the SoFi Stadium area. We'll also follow up with you. We have a number of things going on at Hilltop Park right now that I hope to share with you. And then also, we've been in discussions with the folks from Inglewood regarding the noise that I would like to share with you. And that, mostly the other comments regarding the trash hauling item. And I also received a letter from a representative from Patriot Service, Mr. Mark Warnick, who couldn't be here tonight, but sent the letter to the city clerk regarding his support for their comments tonight.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Baldino?
Yeah, can I just ask, Mr. George, when you reach out to Ms. Wong about her Hyperion, let her know about the AQMD hearing that's gonna be happening on November 19, 2024. Because anyone who is frustrated with Hyperion, that is the opportunity for us to tell the agency with oversight control of this plant that we're tired of the nuisance. And if she wanted to make a Zoom appearance or go down there and make those comments, it'd be greatly appreciated.
I certainly will. Thank you.
And then just, Ms. Dietz, I don't know if she's still here, but if you do reach out, let her know that it's the Parks Recreation Subcommittee that is having hearings on Hilltop, not the CPAC meeting. So just let her know, then direct her to the right public hearing so we can listen to her. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. We're on to Item 8, procedural motions. Read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only to have a motion to do so.
So moved.
Thank you. Give me a second.
Per sec, second.
Drew on the first, per sec on the second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Any polls for consent? No, do have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Per sec, second.
Great. All's in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, we're on to Item 10. As much as it pains me to remove myself from the dais on this, given my subject matter expertise, I am in the industry of solid waste, and some of the companies that are here are either vendors to me or in some cases indirectly customers as well, so I have to remove, I should remove myself from the dais. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem, Pimentel, for Item 10. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Director Sassoon, will you present on this matter?
I'm sorry, Mr. Daniel Pankow is gonna make the presentation, and I'll be here also helping him to answer any questions the City Council may have.
Mr. Pankow, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Hopefully, we can get the presentation up there. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of City Council. My name is Daniel Pankow, your Environmental Programs Manager. It's my pleasure to present this item tonight as it relates to commercial solid waste collection services for our community.
I'll take this dramatic pause to disclose I had conversations with Ron Swanson and John Huntune. Mr. Huntune's your contractor. I think Ron Swanson has since retired, but...
All right, a bit of background. Our municipal code authorizes City Council to determine the methods by which the city manages and regulates the storage, collection, transportation, processing, and disposal of solid waste. Council may choose to regulate through contract, permit, franchise, exclusive or non-exclusive, or another method. Commercial services are currently authorized through a permit system. There are nine companies permitted to provide this service within the city. The commercial service area includes approximately 610 retail industrial locations and 440 multifamily locations, and those are of three or more dwelling units. The current code requires Public Works to issue a hauler permit unless the application is incomplete or inaccurate, the applicant has a solid waste collection permit revoked within the prior year, the applicant has failed to pay any outstanding fine, or the proposed service vehicle does not conform to required minimum standards. Aside from the relatively minimal vehicle standards, there are no substantive qualifications required to obtain a permit. In recent years, the regulation of solid waste management has increased significantly. Failure to achieve or maintain compliance with applicable state laws and regulations can subject the city to significant fines. Increased importance to ensure that solid waste service providers demonstrate ability and expertise necessary to ensure compliance with the myriad of laws and regulations. One of those regulations is Senate Bill 1383. And essentially, SB 1383 requires the state to reduce organic waste disposal by 75% by the year. by seventy-five percent by the year twenty twenty-five. This regulation also requires that twenty percent of current disposed edible food be recovered for human consumption by twenty twenty-five. The bill has specific requirements for jurisdictions and haulers. SB thirteen eighty-three is the most significant waste reduction mandate to be adopted by the state of California in the last thirty years. The two breathtaking photos on this slide show an organics cart and an industrial compost facility. That was supposed to be a joke, but. Let me go on. The non-exclusive franchise model allows for the city to choose from a range of service providers with established qualifications and expertise, and details the provider's duties and obligations, requires insurance indemnity guarantees, and spells out guaranteed liquidated damages for various violations or failure to meet specific requirements. And this one here, this is uh, this is a timeline of our notification. So the city employed a multi-step notification and evaluation process in its search for the most qualified service providers. This began with a five-year notice of intent to franchise commercial services in June of twenty nineteen. In November of twenty twenty-three, the city released its RFQ. Twelve haulers responded, and all were deemed qualified. In April of twenty twenty-four, the twelve qualified responders were provided with an RFP. Consultants and staff carefully evaluated and ranked each proposal based on set criteria. In June of twenty twenty-four, the top nine ranked responders were invited to an in-person panel interview conducted here at City Hall. Each of the twelve qualified responders were provided with a request for proposals in April of twenty twenty-four. City staff, along with our solid waste consultant, carefully evaluated each proposal based on the following criteria that was included within the RFP. It included proposers' experience and qualifications, regulatory compliance and safety, implementation plans and schedule, number and nature of exceptions to the franchise agreement, financial stability along with insurance requirements, and cost and value to the customer. For the interview process, the top nine ranked proposers were invited for an in-person panel interview here at City Hall. This took place over the course of two days. The panel consisted of the city manager, the environmental committee chair, public work staff, including the director and myself, and our environmental consultant from Charles Abbott Associates. After careful evaluation, the panel recommended the top four haulers, in no particular order, to be Edco, American Reclamation, Waste Management, and Athens Services. The top four recommended were all very close in final scoring, and were quite a bit higher than the other five companies. We feel that the top four recommended haulers offer the greatest value to customers, along with assurance with the applicable laws and regulations. That brings me to my recommendation, which is authorize the mayor to execute four non-exclusive franchise agreements for commercial waste management services with Athens, American Reclamation, Edco, and Waste Management in a form approved by the city attorney, or alternatively discuss and take other action. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council questions?
So if the hauler has a permit right now, does that mean we don't also have an agreement that that hauler will indemnify and defend the city if they violate a state law? Is that one of the advantages of going onto a franchise?
Yeah, that is the case. Uh, so there is a lot of difference between the permit process versus the franchise agreement. Under franchise agreements, we had, we have indemnification, we have insurance, we have a lot of teeth, uh, as opposed to a permit process where really the, the haulers own that permit, and it makes it very difficult in order to, to really get, get something happened.
So I guess the motivation is, in order to make sure compliance, we want to have more right to oversee not just a permit, but a franchise agreement with these haulers?
Correct. Particularly with SB thirteen eighty-three, the liability is now the city's to make sure the state law is carried out and uh, you know, get implemented uh, to the, to the letter of the law. And uh, through the franchise agreements, the city intends to, if you would, put that responsibility on the head of the trash haulers, and uh, and that's also part of the process, why we're doing this.
So, just to oversimplify, the indemnity agreement says that the hauler, if the city gets fined for a violation caused by a hauler, that hauler has to indemnify or basically reimburse the city for that fine?
Yeah, the, the indemnification clause protects the city, correct.
Okay.
Councilor Drew?
Okay, uh, actually, I think the gentleman of spoken public comment is not here, but um, I do take issue when I have people coming in telling me that my staff doesn't know anything about business or what they're doing. Obviously, they do. Um, problems do happen when you are bidding for jobs, and that's in this industry, it's in private industry, it is what it is. There's a lot of competition out there. Okay, so my first question for you is, was everyone clear about what the RFP process was that bid for this?
Absolutely.
Was everybody clear that not everybody would get an interview? Was that even part of it afterwards? Did you, was it made that, hey, we're gonna kind of cut it from twelve to whatever, or is that something the staff made a decision on?
Uh, once we did receive uh, the proposals, uh, they were, uh, there were communications between city staff and the, uh, the responders to the RFQ, that's request for qualification that they all passed, uh, and that they would be evaluated, and then, yes.
Okay, it's fine. What I'm saying is, is that, listen, in every job, you know, you can have fifty applications for a job. Not all fifty people get, get an interview. You, you have to go through a process of vetting. It's a very normal process.
That is exactly right.
We're also talking about having, right now, I think we have nine trash haulers in town with permits for a city of five point five square miles.
Correct.
It's a lot of trash haulers. Okay, so I just want to say, so our, our RFP has been respected. Everybody knew about it, right?
Correct.
The criteria was set. Everybody knew about the criteria.
Yes.
I understand that people are gonna disagree with it. That's normal. Okay? The one thing I, I, that's, just wanna, we, we do have to respect our RFP process. That being said, um, I think we also have to look at the fact that, actually, Republic didn't show up tonight, right? There was nobody from Republic? My understanding is Patriot has about twenty-five percent, Republic has about twenty-three percent, and Athens has about eighteen percent of the current business. Is that accurate?
The numbers I have, uh,
Just more or less, right?
Yeah, more or less.
Okay, so that's two-thirds of the business. And my also understanding is that Athens is the only one that made the top four. So my concern here is that we are gifting fifty percent of the business to four people who haven't done business in town before, or have done a little bit of business in town before. So my concern is, is that also in that, in that criteria, was customer service put into play? You know, I know price and cost, I did see what, what it was. Um, I, I believe that we have, do have a responsibility here to not force businesses that have been established with someone for a long time to just say, ah, no, I, I can't, I can't choose that anymore. I, I do, I do have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with what you did with the top four. I get that. I do think we have to take into consideration that we're literally gifting forty-eight percent of the business to somebody that does, does not here yet. So I, I think that is part of what the conversation I'd like to have here is, do we look at, and first of all, when it comes to Patriot and Republic, or just Patriot right now, since they're here, I'm assuming they have all the insurance, all the criteria, they've hit every measurement. Like, they have everything they're supposed to have in order to be able to do their job here?
Uh, they do.
Okay. I understand the scoring thing, that's, I get it. Um, but what I'm saying is, from a business perspective, my business mind tells me that if Patriot was not doing a good job, they wouldn't have twenty-five percent of the business. They would have gone to one of the other eight haulers that are in town to get the business. So I, I do have a, an issue with, and since the other company, Republic, is not here to defend themselves, so I'm only gonna go for Patriot right now. I'm only gonna speak for them, is that if you have that kind of history, it has to be respected. Now, if they didn't have the equipment, and they didn't have the insurance, they didn't have all those things, I get it. But I would like to consider adding that piece in, um, to the pie.
I'll go one further. I don't understand why we have twelve qualified haulers, and then we're down to nine. My thought is, it's great if the city wants to protect itself and move from an outdated permit to a franchise, a non-exclusive franchise. I've got a problem when the city starts trying to pick winners and losers and saying, these are people qualified to do business in town, and we don't think these folks are qualified to do business. In my opinion, if you've got a customer in town and you've been servicing that customer, you're qualified to do business. We like to tout ourselves as a business-friendly city, and I want to see as much competition as we can. And I've never gotten an email up here, someone saying, I've got too much choice in commercial trash haulers, and I think the city's gotta step up and do something. So I, I would think, I, I, I understand why we want to go from a permit to the franchise, but I would think if that opportunity should be provided to anyone who currently has business and has a permit in El Segundo, and then if the law gets enacted and that company can't keep up, we've got more in our arsenal to try to regulate and protect the city from getting any liability, which is really what we're talking about. But when it comes to who is, who is better and who's not better, I let the market decide. You know, let people have a choice of who they want to hire as their trash hauler, for whatever reason that may be. And so instead of saying the, the nine, unless you can give me a reason why all twelve aren't being provided the same equal opportunity to work in our town, I would say open it up to all twelve who have permits. As long as you are qualified, you have the insurance, and you have a customer, you should be able to do work in our town. But we can still switch over to the franchise and protect ourselves, right?
Councilmember Persek?
Yeah, and I'm in alignment with what, um, uh, Mr. Baldino said. You know, we looked at this through the lens of the city, which is correct. I mean, you were looking at it from our lens to say, how do we protect ourselves? But we also need to look at it from the lens of the consumer, and that's the customer who's purchased, who's, you know, contracting with these haulers. And have we done any type of outreach to these, to these thousand customers to say, are you happy with your hauler, trash hauler? Have we done any type of, to, to understand their perspective of why? You know, if Patriot or, um, Republic has, you know, a quarter of the, of the business, they're obviously doing something well that these, these customers want to keep them. So I'm just, I understand why we're trying to do it, and we're doing it through the lens of our lens to protect the city, but we also need to look at from the lens of the business owner in town.
A quick departure from the regulatory issues on thirteen eighty-three, because that uh, has been the teeth around a lot of our solid waste pieces. Uh, its enforcement seems to be continually postponed, um, at least administratively. Uh, but I would ask, in, in twenty nineteen, when this was first mooted, there was concern about congestion from the different haulers in the commercials portions of town. I have never heard that complaint. Now, that, that notwithstanding, I don't spend a lot of time at seven AM, you know, on, on Douglas, you know, walking around looking for the trash haulers. So is that, do you get, are we receiving a lot of administrative complaints about excessive hauler traffic?
Uh, somewhat. Uh, I have received a few complaints. I don't want to say too many, uh, but I've received a few complaints that these trash haulers, they start before the time they're supposed to, and there are two or three of them at the same time or within thirty minutes that show up, but not, not very often. I haven't heard anything in last, I'm gonna say, last year. But prior to last year, I received a few complaints, but not too many.
And I'll use the, the example of our residential franchise. The residential franchise, do we have all the information about where they are tipping? So if there is a violation, a thirteen eighty-three violation, we are able to assess it to one individual company? Is there a practical component to trying to track that to more than one company?
I'm not sure if I follow your question.
So if we, if we, if the state shows up, if Cal Recycle shows up and's like, hey, you've got a thirteen eighty-three violation, so-and-so put this many bags of, of leaves in the trash, what is our practical ability to track that to a particular franchise?
Yeah, there are ways to do that. There are, there are routes that are, are gonna be established based on, it, it's gonna get complicated, but we do have the technology to set up the routes to see what company is picked up by what many, and, and what's supposed to be, on average, get to be picked up, and how much is being picked up. So we could, we could do that. It'll, it'll, it'll be a tedious thing to do, but it could be done.
With that technology, is the, is the capability vastly different between one or twenty-one different companies? Once you have those routes established, the routes are just a simple matter of coding in who has that route, right?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
One of the, one of the requirements of SB thirteen eighty-three is contamination monitoring, and a lot of the updated, um, newer solid waste trucks, they have camera technology. As they tip, they can see if there's contamination, especially within the organics container, and that information can, can get reported real time to the city, and also to potentially Cal Recycle, if that's what they're looking for.
And would that use of that technology be mandated in these franchise agreements?
It would, and it was part of the selection criteria, and the four companies that we're recommending, um, they not only have dedicated SB thirteen eighty-three compliance staff, um, they also have that updated, uh, camera technology, along with their own kind of, um, database that we can mine the information from should Cal Recycle ask us, which is something that's kind of lacking at this point.
Was that something that they demonstrated as part of their compelling offering, or was that something we mandated specifically in the franchise agreement that you have to have a particular kind of technology?
It was within the, the in-person panel interviews. It was one of the questions.
It was one of the questions we asked of them. Do you have something like this?
Exactly.
And is that something that is typically organic to a vehicle, or are those modification kits that can be added to vehicles? I will betray my lack of knowledge of this specific technology at this time.
It's, 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 at first, it was more of kind of an add-on, because a lot of folks had the older model vehicles, but now that SB thirteen eighty-three's been in place for a few years, a lot of the new trucks are incorporated with that camera technology.
But it's not a, an inordinate ask to say, hey, you've got a truck in your fleet, slap this on here?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Drew?
Yeah, so I, you know, right, I, I understand what you're saying on the, the, you know, if there's twelve qualified people, let, let's do it, but I, at some point, you get to a saturation point. You know, we're, we're a city of five point five square miles, right? So we're talking about one trash company for every half a mile? It just gets to be, competition will happen between, I think, six people, five to six. I just think when you get out to twelve, then the question is, why'd you bother doing the RFP to begin with? Right?
No, I, I don't disagree. I, I, I think the RFP artificially limits the amount of viable haulers that one can contract with. I think the issue we're trying to face here is our permits don't give us protection if the state comes down and doesn't audit. These franchise fees will have them have insurance. They'll have to indemnify us, so if we get fined, we can pass it through to the culpable party. That gives us more protection. That makes sense. What doesn't make sense is saying that these people who work in town are no longer qualified to do business, and these people who work in town are qualified, like we're picking winners and losers. And you can make that saturation argument about general contractors. There's a million general contractors out there. Do we want the city to say there's four qualified general contractors who can only work and remodel your house? On my street, there's two different projects going on. They've got different general contractors. It'd be less work on the environment if there was just one guy, but capitalism, you know, customer service, the things that people respect, and, and if we're gonna say we're business-friendly, I, I'm not in the habit of having the city, under any pretense, say, you're winners and you're losers. If you want to strengthen regulations and protect the city, great. But I'm saying, give that opportunity to everybody who's got a client, who's got a permit, and then if they can't make it, we've got a stronger mechanism to weed out those who can't comply, without arbitrarily cutting someone's legs off and saying, you don't get to do business in our town anymore. That's the problem I've got.
Good point. Thank you.
So if, if we decided to move forward with the franchise component and not, like, say, um, as long as they have
Yeah, I would recommend we move forward with transitioning from permits to the franchise agreement. I'm just saying, don't limit it to four.
Just whoever.
Operate to anybody who's already got a permit and has existing customers in town. And time will tell if they're able to comply with these new state regulations or not. We've, we've now got a better arsenal to enforce what the state wants. We're not at the whim of a permit, and we're also not telling people, you know, you don't get to work here.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't want to throw staff under the bus here, because I remember these conversations, and I was one of the ones who normally would say, hey, I think twelve, when you have a lot of people competing for the same business, it gets a little bit messy. You can have a lot of competition with five or six, but I, so. But I, so this is not on staff. You did everything that was asked of you. You know, just because we will tend on occasion to change our minds when we're up here, you change your mind based on new information. So I've got a lot of new information tonight. Uh Councilmember Baldino makes a very good point. I obviously I'm in business, so I'm all for a free market economy. Um so I agree. I think we move to the franchise agreement um and let the qualified people compete for the business.
Do we need to establish some type of policy as far as if someone slips out of compliance, that there's a warning system? Because these are, you know, people's livelihoods, these are businesses. Is it like three strikes, you're out? You know, do we need to establish some type of policy that says, okay, you know, we've got notified that you're you're not meeting the standard? You've warning number one, warning number two, number warning number three, then you're out. Like what is, do we need to establish some type of policy?
Yeah, this policy is set up already within the franchise agreement. We just cannot go and simply say, all right, you're no good no more. It 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 goes through a due process, so it goes step by step.
And is that, what what is that process?
The process was put together by our city attorney's office would be a notification and then maybe uh a a a letter of of uh of uh uh for uh sec- at the at the next level would would get would get tougher and then maybe filing and then and then eventually, I'm not familiar with all the process at this time in my mind, but it goes through the process.
It generally depends on what the what the violation is. If it's something that's really serious, like a financial penalty and they're not paying it, then they're gonna get immediately ceased. I mean, or there's, they're gonna at least have their contract suspended and terminated pretty quickly if they're putting the city at financial risk. Um now, if they're just out of compliance, um maybe they've had some trash bill on the road, something like that. They'll get notices to, you know, to cure that and stop doing those things. And if they keep doing it, then they might lose their contract. But it comes down to the degree or severity of what the uh the failure is.
Okay, so it's fair and equitable.
Yeah, we're, I mean, once we contract with somebody, we're not looking to terminate their contract immediately. It's a fair amount of work to get these people on board, so if they're on board, they, we want it to work.
Are we able to delineate a maximum number of franchises that can be issued, franchisees if it's non-exclusive? If we, let's say we walked out of here, let's say there were fifteen companies that showed up. We said, okay, as of November of twenty twenty-four, there can be fifteen. And anytime somebody falls out of compliance, it goes down and we'll establish a minimum of five and a maximum of fifteen. Is that? Because it seems like right now, there is a, there seems to be a clear staff concern that we have an inordinate number of of haulers. It seems to be a a council concern that we are restraining trade while chasing thirteen eighty-three compliance. Probably both of those have an element of truth. So if there is a effort to winnow the number of franchisees without restraining trade at this time by having a target number of franchises of, maybe the right number is four, maybe it's five, but right now we got ten or eight or nine. Uh is that something that is unduly complicated?
I mean, I just think to um Mr. Baldino's point, you know, we don't limit builders. And when they, all those different builders go to get pulled permits, you know, our staff is having to deal with many, many, many builders. Um and it, you know, I think we should move forward with the franchise without any limits and allow anyone who wants to be part of that to be part of it. And then we can monitor it and reassess it in, say, six, seven months.
Was that a motion?
Oh, I'll make a formal motion. I didn't know we were done talking.
I I thought it sounded, it was phrased in the form of a motion. So I wanted to ask, I wanted to be, I wanted to be respectful of a possible, Robert Trues of Orders are here for a reason. We're not animals.
Just one second. So we've asked a few questions up there, but we're talking amongst ourselves and the question really should go to you. What is the issue going to, obviously, the franchise thing, I think we all agree on? Um going to what you're saying, twelve people submitted, twelve people are qualified. What is the administrative issue with that?
Uh do we have, yeah, would you, yeah.
Call in the finance.
Hi, Ray Beimer, I'm the environmental consultant um for the last three, four, five years. Um I I'll just, I'll just add and speaking directly to.
Could you lean forward to the microphone a bit so we can hear you?
Oh, sure, yeah. And to answer hopefully your question. Um so obviously, we're we're contracted, so we have a a set budget, set amount of hours, you know. We spend probably about half of our contract administering the haulers' compliance. So uh that's, and that's just with the permit. That's just with the regular permit where we're not actually even, you know, delving into all the franchise components and checks and balances and all that stuff. Um so I can imagine that significantly increasing with twelve franchises if we were to stay with the same twelve permits. So um I will say some of the permits are gonna stay because we have temporary uh for like roll-off haulers, so those aren't really included in the commercial side. So when we say we have, I think we have twelve or how many permitted haulers, I think? Yeah, so twelve or thirteen permitted haulers. Some of those will stay and will have to continue administering them as permits. But as far as the franchise agreements to have, and I'll just use the word burden, to have to uh monitor and synthesize the data throughout all, you know, our reporting or annual reporting to Cal Recycle or what have you. I can see that being uh more laborious and costly as far as the city's output, whether it's us or city staff, increasing hours, budget, um any of all that. So does that answer?
Yes, it does. So then I guess my my next question would be to Eliza is that there's gotta be a magic number in there that that makes more sense. Because it sounds like twelve is burdensome and four is too little.
Well, if we have all of our fees and permits, we're trying to get to cost recovery. So if there are costs the city's incurring handing out or administering a franchise trash hauler fee, then wouldn't that go into the franchise application and payment?
Yeah, but then then doesn't it get passed on to the eventual business and then to the customer, right?
Sure, but it's equally among all of them, right?
It's just a cost to the end business. By adding more companies, we're raising the fees to the people who are paying them.
Well, then, in theory, then the market at work, right? So people will no longer pay that person's fee and then eventually we end up with four to begin with at the same.
Yeah, just just let the city council know, we are not proposing any franchise fee uh for these franchise agreements.
But you were doing that based off choosing four.
Well, part of it is also because.
Now you're not choosing four anymore.
Well, part of it is to, we wanted to avoid having any Prop two eighteen requirements out of this process. And so the city wasn't putting any, um we didn't want to have to go through a process of having to get the commercial customers having to approve these rates. And since the city's not taking any money out of the process, that makes it very clean. If we're going to charge a fee, then I'm gonna have to look at whether or not we're gonna go through a Prop two eighteen process with all these customers. Because now we're, the city's taking money out of the process.
No, I get it, I get it. I didn't know we were doing it gratis. But I still.
No, is there, I know, I've seen it, I know there's a slide on a slide for it. Currently, what is the breakdown of, I mean, I named three companies that have sixty-six percent of the business. Okay, so the other two-thirds, there, because I know there's people who. Yeah, because I know that there's two that are in the final four here that have zero percent. They had never done business here before, right? So I'm just interested to see what that number is. So it's a lot of small. So in the end, by 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 going through six people, you're covering well over, you, your delta's there. I mean, you gotta, if sixty-six percent's already covered and now you have, I think, three new players in the game, one being Edco, who's already doing all the, all the residential, right? Are we, are we really limiting choice? You're you're telling somebody who uses a current hauler, they can no longer use that hauler and they've got to pick somebody else if that hauler doesn't get the franchise fee. That's why I said, if you're already doing business and you've got a customer, you're kind of qualified to do what you're doing because someone's hiring you to do that job and they like it. And if you've got a permit to do it and we want to switch you to a franchise fee, let's just switch everybody who's got a customer and a permit over to franchise fees. And if there's some troublemakers in there, we can weed them out through our administrative process with due process and saying, you're not living up to your obligations to the city. You've been warned several times, you're at risk of losing your franchise fee. But for us up here to say it's gonna be seven or six or five, just seems capricious and arbitrary. So I I I want to keep El Segundo being business friendly. I like the idea of getting more protections with our franchise agreement. If it costs us a little more time and money to administer, so be it. That's another burden the state puts on cities that they don't pay us for. Like a million other things I could talk about that the state makes us do that we might not agree with, but we gotta do it. Um but but for me, I'm, I I think that, like I said, I I don't like limiting this to a handful or whatever number. But I'm happy to make a motion. Okay, so wait a second, that's up for the nine, but you have, you said right now there's nine, right?
There's there's four haulers that hold the top percentages.
No, no, I mean, current permit. Because I thought, somebody told me, I think.
Four, four resident, four uh commercial multifamily.
Commercial multifamily, how many different companies are involved in that?
Nine.
Okay, so there's nine that have some percentage of the business right now.
At least one, at least one customer.
Okay.
Then number's nine.
Well, no, but because there's two people that made the final four that had zero before today. Have current permits, but not a percentage of the business.
No, every every hauler has at least one. So even if we were saying, I mean, even.
Guys are giving me fuzzy math in my meetings.
So every RFP respondent has a permit.
Yeah, we have, yes. The lowest count we have for a commercial is two. So everybody, every hauler has at least an account.
Every hauler has a permit, everybody on that list, so that whole, that list of twelve, everybody's there. Okay, got you.
One of the things the council may want to consider is if you're if you're going to go with that high a number of um providers, this was gonna be a seven-year term. And that's usually done because they're coming in, they have to make a certain investment of their time and and money to get a return. But if you're making a completely wide open, you you might want to see, particularly with all the new regulations, how that really plays out with that many haulers. So you could go to like a two-year, you know, because really, if if you're just leaving things the same the way they are, but they're doing a contract, there's really not a reason to give them a long-term um contract at that point. You might want to see how this is going, because then at the end of two years, you can look at and see, is this working out well with with this many haulers?
Right, so to your point, that basically means that it it the the business will dictate who stays in business.
Well, or if it turns out administratively it's problematic, we have a lot of problems with Sacramento as far as compliance, having this many haulers, you're gonna be more nimble and be able to adjust to that as opposed if we have twelve contracts out there for seven-year terms. We may not be, the city may not be very nimble in being able to react to that if it's not playing out very well. Normally, you see the seven years when you're you're giving it to a couple, two or three haulers, because there again.
We want to talk about limiting that?
Uh how about three? Three years.
What say you, Mayor Proton?
In twenty twenty-five, we should, in theory, now see the first enforcement of thirteen eighty-three. And if there's a, if we have a franchise agreement and we have a particular hauler that is out of compliance, I presume that 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 punitive cycle begins very, very quickly. So in terms of shortening it, I I don't know that that three, uh three may be too long, right? We may, we may sit here at the end of two and have companies that say, we don't want to play in California anymore, especially on the smaller side. Um so if 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 we're going to do this for less than seven years because we want something that we're nimble and reactive to, I would recommend shortening that as as much as possible.
Do you do you have a number in mind?
I mean, I think you go, I mean, you can't do it in two months, but I think two years is probably reasonable. Um, you know, I would not go more than three.
My only concern, not knowing enough about this industry, is kind of like the street sweeper. Where we said it was a seven-year deal, we wanted it to, and they're like, I need the longer contract to get financing to buy the equipment to update my stuff. So if I can show I've got a seven-year contract, it's one of those things.
I would, I would tend to disagree a bit on that just because if the enforcement, if the state begins enforcing, you know, these companies have known, you know, thirteen eighty-three did not just drop out of the moon, right? We did, we did the sort of panicky residential piece because we thought we were gonna get hammered on thirteen eighty-three and we had trash cans everywhere and coyotes running wild in the streets. Uh so everybody knows this is coming. If someone cannot comply with thirteen eighty-three at the tipping point, that is, that that is a business risk they've chosen to take.
But wouldn't they, wouldn't we, wouldn't we be able to notify them and go through the process of eliminating them out of the franchise if they weren't adhering to their, to the, to the regulations?
Yeah, if it's a seven-year deal and you're being kicked out.
Then you're just, our staff needs to be on top of making sure that we issue the.
I will say, though, that, you know, it's one thing to have a contract that says you have the right to terminate and those kind of things, you're going through that. And but you have a lot of pushback. We give me a lot of arguments as opposed if there's a shorter term on it, then there's really no argument as far as the contract terms over. We're not gonna be in litigation with five companies, which could be very expensive. I just, given what I'm hearing here, it's a little concerning if if twelve are, you know, that's becomes very burdensome to operate. And with these new regulations, which we're just getting our feet wet with really, and and, I mean, they've been out there for a few years, but there's been no real enforcement. And when Sacramento starts getting serious about that, like there are other things these days, it might become a real problem quickly for us.
But if you, if we did a seven-year contract and said we have a re-opener in two years, in every two years or.
This point is it's cleaner for us if we can tell them in advance, you've only got an obligation for two years. Because having to send the letter, hire the attorney, that takes the city time, energy and money. And so I I would agree to Mark's recommendation that my would be limited to two years, offer it to those who have been deemed qualified, have permits, switch them over to the franchise, two-year agreements, and then we see how it goes. Right?
Is that a motion?
Are we moving?
I will make a motion. If you can state your motion in nine parts. Uh I'll I'll make a motion that the city move from the permit city to the non-exclusive franchise agreements and that those franchises be given to the twelve qualified haulers who have permits and clients and that that term of the proposed franchise agreement be not seven, but two years.
Do they have to have permits and current clients or permits?
Permits. Well, it's at twelve. We have a list of twelve people that during their presentation submitted and we told them, you're all qualified. So those twelve qualified who have either clients or permits should have the opportunity to switch from a permitting program to the franchise contract, non-exclusive agreement for a period of two years. It's and or, whatever those twelve qualified haulers were, right?
Did did all, did all current cus- client or businesses pass? I mean, are they part of the twelve?
Well, um.
Or is there a cus- is there a business that's not part of the twelve?
Within the these twelve, there are uh, there are a few that do not have any commercial accounts with City of El Segundo.
But they're permitted. They have permits, they don't have clients. So if, so if I understand you, Councilmember Baldino, you're saying if they, as long as they have a permit, they can participate in the franchise. On your motion.
Yes, but I understand that a permit could just be like a temporary roll-off at a construction job as opposed to I'm coming every week to your commercial business, so.
That that's fine, I'm just.
Yeah, I'm trying to be more expansive if you couldn't tell what my thinking is.
Let me make it clear. They do have permit for roll-offs. That means they can bring a big container and set it in front of a house in order to haul off the reconstruction materials. They that they have roll-off permits, but they, not all of them have commercial accounts.
But some of these respondents to the RFP fall into that category, right? They might have a permit, but not a current client, current account?
Correct, so.
And we want them included.
These twelve have equipment that it takes to haul off commercial trash, but not all of them do already within the City of El Segundo, if that makes sense.
It does.
Yeah.
I I think the city knows the twelve qualified companies.
Yes.
And those would be the ones.
Those are the ones that.
That would be part of my motion.
Okay.
So I do have one question. So what happens if I'm a brand-new company and I just decide to bring my business to El Segundo and I'm qual- and I can't be part of it?
Well, it's kind of too late by now because I think the council member is referring to the ones that are already applied and went through the process, correct?
So what happens if I'm a, I I'm a current company, but I sell it to another company, I sell my business to another company? Does that company qualify under this as well? Or they're not because they've just sold their business?
The contracts will have assignment provisions in them that, um so long as they're in good standing, they have, I mean, we'll have certain provisions in them. I mean, generally, don't allow assignments unless it's like a whole assignment of it, um but we can address that.
Because what, because if you, say, I I'm I'm one of the twelve.
Yes, ma'am.
And but I'm ready to retire and I decide I'm gonna put my business up for sale. If I can't sell this client base because this new company. if I can't sell this client base, because this new company isn't part of the franchise, then my business value just went to zero. Or negligible.
You'd be buying those customers.
Buy the franchise, yeah, you'd be buying.
And the permit, and everything else.
But, so, but, but, we, we accept that new company as a franchise?
They'll set it up probably where we, I mean, if they just change like the shareholders, I mean, the LLCs, I mean.
Just making sure, I just want to make sure we're not killing someone's business.
I think so, I think they'll be okay.
Okay, we can't, not just think, we need to make sure, because.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion, clear as mud, a twenty-three-page motion. Subsection Q, do we have a second? Second. We'll take a vote. All those in favor of Councilmember Baldino's, uh, motion about, well, it's about a lot of things. Is everyone clear, is everyone clear on his motion?
Yeah.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Four oh, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Metcalf.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem and Council, great discussion. Item eleven, resolution declaring the existence of an emergency and authorizing the award of a contract without competitive bidding for the permanent repair of the City of El Segundo Wiseburn Aquatic Center pool heaters, Mr. George.
Yes, uh, Public Works Director will give that staff report, thank you, Lys.
Yeah, I'll, I'll wait for a minute if you don't mind. Thank you guys for coming.
So polite.
I love the happy faces.
Yeah. Not my face.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the City Council. Uh, this briefing or PowerPoint presen, presentation, rather, is about permanent repairs of the City of El Segundo Wiseburn Aquatics Center pool heaters. So here's a little background, I'm sure everybody knows about the background, but for the benefit of the listeners, the construction of the aquatic center was initiated, as you will know, was based on a settlement agreement between the Wiseburn United School District and the city, City of El Segundo. The construction began in January two thousand seventeen, and the facility was open to public in January of two thousand nineteen, two years later. Two of the heaters for the competition pool, which is the larger pool, it, you know, those, those heaters failed completely in March of two thousand twenty-two, which had just had started working for City of El Segundo. And the temporary repairs, uh, were made at the direction of the City Council in July of two thousand twenty-two for approximately a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So currently, there are three, uh, three distinct and separate heating systems at the aquatic center. Each system has one boiler with its own external heat exchanger unit. So the boiler, very quickly, the boiler is what boils the hot water. The, uh, the external heat exchanger unit transfers the heat from the boiler to the pool, if that makes sense. Basically, that's how it works. The competition pool currently has two of these heating systems, which means, uh, it has two boilers and two external heat exchange units, each at one point two million BTU per hour, so that's a subtotal of two point four eight million BTU per hour. The, the practice pool, the smaller pool, has the third heating system with a heating capacity of point four million BTU per hour, so the total capacity for the entire aquatics center currently is two point eight eight million BTU per hour. So what is proposed is a new system will function as a single system, in other words, it's not, no longer separate distinct systems, it's one system, works as a team, and it really sends the heat out where the heat is needed the most. So this, this boiler, which is six million BTU per hour, it, it boils up the water, and, and then if the signal comes from competition pool, well, it sends the heat there, or if it comes from practice pool, it sends it there, and, and what it does is, it really helps the redundancy. So you no longer depend on, you know, if, if one of the boilers on the current system goes out, then you're screwed. But with this new system, it makes up for it, the redundancy is there. So there's a six million BTU for the boiler capacity, and then there's a four million BTU per hour for external heat exchanger unit for the competition pool, and a one million BTU per hour external heat exchanger unit for the practice pool. So the difference, this, this extra one million BTU per hour, it allows for system to run more efficiently. That, that means it doesn't run, run all the way to the maximum level that you said, it, it's, it's really runs a lot more efficient this way, and it cuts down the repair cost, and it, it minimizes the service interruptions. And I've worked very closely with the designer, and I'm not a mechanical engineer, but I understood a few things, and we really worked it out.
Is there a softener?
Pardon?
Is there a softener now? Will we be putting a softener on the water now?
Uh, we do have that, yes.
Okay, because the, the original failure was from hardness, because we did not put a softener on that.
Uh.
I mean, two, two failures ago.
Yeah, I, I don't want to get into detail, but frankly, the major failure is the fact that, as you could see, the proposed system is more than twice as much capacity as the current system, in terms of BTU per hour. You know, it was two point eight eight or two point nine, right now it's six, six BTU per hour, so it, there was a lot of stress on those heaters.
Yeah, and that'll make that hardness fall out.
Yeah.
But if we do not have an adequately up-sized softener on it, then we're going to have to add a lot more chemistry.
That is part of the, along with all the re, reconfiguration of electrical, plumbing, and mechanical system, which is the last bullet.
Yeah.
Uh, the cost of what we are proposing is about six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, we are asking for seven hundred thousand dollar budget, uh, which includes little money for contingency, and this, uh, construction of, of this, these repairs takes about six to eight weeks. Uh, and we plan to do the work on July, August of next year. Uh, during that time, the, the pool has to be shut down, basically. Uh, the lead time to obtain the equipment is, is six to eight months, and, uh, the contractor is NOR Systems, which is the same contractor who made the temporary repairs, they are the best in the industry, no questions. Uh, a few other notes, uh, the Wiseburn School District will reimburse the city up to three hundred thousand upon completion of the work. Uh, all parts and equipments for the proposed system are gonna, are made in the US. That way, if, God forbid, we need to get a part, you know, it's readily available, we don't have to go to Germany. Uh, there is one-year warranty on parts and material, and we're trying to obtain an extended five-year warranty on, on material. Uh, so we are working with NOR System to, to, to get that. So the recommendation, and I don't want to bore you, is what it appears on, on the staff report, uh, we want to declare emergency and, and asking authorization, so the city manager could, could, uh, sign a contract with NOR System, uh, budget of seven hundred thousand dollars, and, uh, alternatively, we can discuss anything related to the item, and I'll be glad to answer any question you may have.
All right, thank you, sir, colleagues.
I have a question.
Yes.
It'll be different, so, we're planning on closing the pool for two months.
Uh, I would think a month and a half.
Okay, well, yeah.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Just assume two months.
Yes.
So, we have a new pool, or our refurbished pool, that's slated to open five months later, four, four or five months after that, or maybe five months. We're going to lose money from these businesses that use the pool, the current, the aquatic center, could we not establish some type of bonus program to, and give it to Morales, or Morello, if they complete the plunge early enough, so we don't have to displace these, the, the swim, the swim teams? So, and we could give a, create a bonus program that aligns to the amount of money we would lose by closing the pool?
Uh, yes, eh, there is a process by which the city could, uh, could approach the contractor and get a price as to, uh, what would be the charges in case if they finish the project, uh, one day early, so based on how many days, we can get a price, it would have to be a price which we could negotiate, and we bring it to, to, to this body, and, and it has to be approved, but there, there are incentives, and some of the construction industry already has that before even the project is bid, but it's not too late to, to approach the contractor and ask for that price.
The amount, the amount of money you would have to pay on a per-day basis to incentivize them to increase construction, that remodel, is far will be in excess of anything that's made at that aquatic center on a daily basis. And I, I can have conversations with you about what the user rates are, and what the money that is being made over there, and we're not printing money at the aquatic center.
No, I know we're not printing money, it's just that there's such a, there's a window, and I was just curious if
Right, but I'm.
there's an opportunity to somehow, because the, the reason you picked July and August is, was usage, right?
Well, uh, it took, it took the lead time, and really, this is something that, that we need to keep in mind for the plunge, there's a lead time for the equipment, so we may not really be able to cut the schedule too short.
And the club, see, the club seasons will be ending, and there'll be quiet period for, for scholastic sports at the beginning of, of August, too, right? So, there's a, there's a little bit of a window there to work, where it's somewhere bigger users.
I just have a question.
Yeah, yes.
Just to see if this was something that.
We could, but in my opinion, frankly, what Mr. Baldino indicated, the cost would be, would be very high, and also, as I indicated, a lot of material, they have a lead time to get here, and, and, you know, I never thought that I see a day that those lead times become reality. I mean, eh, because of the pandemic, things have changed so much, including the, the, uh, orders for equipment, for switchgear, for air condit, I mean, it is ridiculous.
So are you confident that if we say, okay, we're going to pick July and August, like a date in July, we're going to have the proper equipment to install these new heaters?
Yes, because we have, uh, I already, I'm in touch with the NOR System, and they know about that, so the minute this body approves, uh, this item tonight, they can get on ordering and make darn sure that the equipment is ordered, and, you know, I, I don't guarantee, but I'm, I've pretty much, I have a pretty good idea that it'll be there by July.
His comment about the lead time is, there's a switchgear that we need for the plunge, that we know we're not getting until eight, nine months from now, so it, that is going to kind of drive that project more than.
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll just have to make sure that the outreach to these, these, um,
Absolutely.
clubs that we're displacing for this period of time is.
We, we plan to let everybody know about the schedule, about the shutdown, the minute this body approves, uh, going forward with it, with the contract.
We'll have Master Swim can call Ryan's phone.
I'm at the aquatic subcommittee, they can talk to me once a month.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Um, I guess my only comment is, it may not be the best decision, but I think it's the right decision, given the circumstances we find ourselves, we, we need to get this pool up and running, the heaters are undersized, we've been working on repairs and hope and prayer for a long time, so I'm, I'm glad to have this before us, to finally get action to put this chapter behind us and hopefully get a working aquatic center.
Me too.
Thank you, Councilmember Baldino, any other comments, questions?
No.
I'll move approval, okay, we got, first, we got the.
I'll second it.
Hold on, sorry, we got two items, we've got a resolution, attorney's going to have to read the title on the resolution, and then, uh, we'll vote on adopting that. I got to go write a clerk in.
I, I really want to acknowledge all the support I get from Rec and Park Department, and, uh, Cheryl Ebert, my, uh, my city engineer regarding this project, I really want to thank both of you guys to help me out with this.
Thank you, staff, we really appreciate it.
Mayor and Council, a resolution declaring the existence of an emergency and authorization, and authorizing the award of a contract without competitive bidding pursuant to Public Contract Code, Sections eleven oh two, two oh, twenty thousand one hundred sixty-eight, twenty-two thousand fifty, regarding the immediate repair of pool heaters required at twenty-two forty East Grand Avenue, and finding such actions exempt from further review under the California Enviro, Environmental Quality Act is ready for adoption.
Who would like to move approval of adopting the resolution?
Pimentel is so moved.
Do you have a second?
For a second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, okay, next up is to authorize the city manager to approve and execute a standard public works construction contract with NOR Systems International to repair existing heaters at the El Segundo Wiseburn Aquatic Center for an amount of six hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars, and authorize an additional eighty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars as contingency funds for potential unforeseen conditions for a total budget amount of seven hundred thousand dollars, would someone like to move approval?
So moved.
Okay, Baldino on the first, Pimentel on the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero as well. All right, thank you, Mr. Sauson. We're on to city clerk, reports this evening.
Sure, um, just want to say thank you to the El Segundo Public School Library, Mark and his staff have been awesome. Um, we told, I went over there today to speak to the vote center workers, they said they have had about, at that time, and it was about four o'clock, well over twenty-five hundred people have voted today, um, Saturday and Sunday each saw about two hundred and fifty plus, and Monday was about five, six hundred. So that little vote center over there at the library has been quite amazing, so shout out to, uh, library and their staff for letting us do it, it's, it's not just four days, it's about seven to eight days with, um, setup and takedown. So, we, uh, appreciate that, and, um, just also want to shout out to my staff, because they've just been, um, amazing during this process, so kudos to Lily and Patricia, so, thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo that, great job to you and your staff, it's a ton of back and forth, and all the reporting requirements, and pesky sign ordinances, and all that fun stuff, so thank you very much.
Lots of fun stuff, thank you.
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baldino?
Um, yeah, on October twenty-first, we had our aquatic subcommittee meeting, uh, and I want to let everyone know, there's going to be a large swim meet on November sixteenth and seventeenth. They, they're estimating eight hundred participants at that pool, which is bringing up a lot of interesting questions about where are these people going to park? So we've looked at the, uh, joint use agreement, and staff is proactively now reaching out to other landlords in the area that might have parking to help facilitate these larger events. I also asked staff to come to the aquatic subcommittee with a little schedule and RFI about the plunge renovation, so that if anyone has a questions, we'll have a little report once a month about where we are, what the costs are, so that's something quick reference for everybody. Um, no parks, our park subcommittee will meet tomorrow, but I did attend the reach-out at the teen center for the skate park, it was very well-attended, I, I think the average age there was probably under twelve for the skaters, they, they very much enjoyed the pizza, so nice job there. Uh, and then we also had our two-by-two with the school board this week, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much, all right, Councilmember Drew?
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you, sir, Councilmember Purstuck?
Nothing for me tonight?
Mayor Protem, Pimentel? Uh, two items, Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief, uh, on the one, uh, county sanitation, so our, our property is east of PCH, uh, has been, and I'll try and summarize this, in two thousand, purchased a piece of property out in the desert that had been a farm to build a giant composting facility, uh, part of the contract on that acquisition stipulated it would be up and running in a given amount of time. It took fifteen years to get through the regulatory process, uh, and just beforehand, a very clever, uh, business person purchased the farm, and then sued the county sanitation district for being out of compliance, for not having a compost facility, um, up and running in the amount of time it was supposed to. That has been a piece of litigation that, uh, ended with a thirty-six million dollar award in favor of the plaintiff. Uh, we are the defendants, uh, we lost on appeal as a county, so that will have a significant budgetary impact on LA County sanitation, and ultimately, those costs will be passed down, um, to the ratepayers, uh, east of PCH, so that is a, I mean, obviously, LA County has, has, uh, uh, it's huge, right? There's four million people being served by, by LA County sanitation, but that's still a large amount of money. Um, and it was unfortunate, I think that most people thought that, that on appeal, it would be overturned, because it was a, a clever piece of, of lawfare by the, uh, by the, by the plaintiff to swoop it and grab it. Uh, that notwithstanding, uh, so that's bad news, uh. And then on the transportation, we'll have our next transportation meeting tomorrow, but in the meantime, we had a special meeting, uh, about the light rail that would connect the K Line, uh, to SoFi Stadium and the entertainment parks, that ultimately, a request for additional funding from the COG, uh, by the City of Inglewood was, uh, not passed. That train, just for perspective, would have cost about $284,000 per foot of track. And that was as designed, not even with any construction going on. So, uh, it was not an easy decision to make, it was obviously some complexity around it, but in a very short version, uh, that did not pass, so traffic, uh, will continue to be an issue going in and out of those, uh, venues as we work, uh, as a region to try and figure out a way to, uh, ameliorate that. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
By the way, thank you for representing, and I couldn't make that meeting, and that was a very contentious meeting, the board directors meeting, so thank you for representing the city.
Two, two conference rooms, overflow conference rooms of.
I'm sure.
Very happy public comments.
I'm sorry I missed it, I'm also thankful that you were there, so, thank you for that. I will just say that, um, there's a lot that went on, but the most, I think, meaningful thing is I just want to shout out staff. We had LA Tech Week, and El Segundo was represented with incredible events. I know Mayor Protem was there, I think my colleagues were at some of the events as well. We had hundreds of people, maybe a thousand or more, coming through El Segundo for these different events. We represented incredibly well, got great press out of that, were featured recently on Bloomberg, continuing to put the city in the best light possible from an economic development standpoint, so that was really fun to be a part of. And that's all I have, the senior, city attorney?
How's it evening, Mayor? Thank you.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A quick Hyperion update. We've, we've, we have a final draft, uh, that Elias and I reviewed this morning, uh, for the amendment to Dr. Stenstrom's contract. As you know, we're, we're, um, bringing on an additional consultant that will work with Dr. Stenstrom more on the, the day-to-day operations, monitoring the operations, reporting to us, uh, about what Hyperion's doing, are they meeting schedules, and also, ultimately, will be working with us on a preventive maintenance plan for the property. So that contract, um, amendment is, is in place, and actually, I think our kickoff meeting is this Thursday. As you know, and I think, um, Councilmember Baldino mentioned that the, there's a AQMD board hearing on November 19th. We sent the letter, uh, with certain recommendations to AQMD last week, and, and actually, we're going to send it again this week, just as a reminder. Over the past two weeks, AQMD received, believe it or not, 110 odor complaints. Number, it was, it's a big number. A lot of it had to do with the, um, October 30th, um, uh, red algae bloom that, um, was discovered in the Santa Monica Bay, and it really contributed a lot to the, to the odors that emanated, and folks obviously thought it was from Hyperion. The, on October 25th, uh, they, Hyperion informed us that they conducted a planned evaluation of the plant's intermediate pump page, uh, began necessary repairs on that. They also had, uh, there was also high H2S readings from the south monitoring station that, uh, they told us was caused by the purging of gas inside one of the biological reactors. Since the purge readings, uh, since that, if they repaired that and the purge, uh, since the purge, the readings have returned to normal, and, um, also temporary insulation material was placed, um, to mitigate noise at the north side of a, a digester mixer. So they are, uh, working on things. Communication's been a little better, but we still have to prod them to, to, to keep, keep us surprised of things, and we're hoping that with the new addition of the consultant that's going to help Dr. Stenstrom, we'll get even better communication. And then finally, um, since tonight was Elias's night, um, I want to let the coun- I want, yes?
One question on the A for the Hyperion. Just for clarification, that November 19th meeting, is that the, the time that they're going to determine if they need to, um, that we're going to ask them to extend?
Yes.
The, um.
The, the abatement order? Yes, absolutely, that, and that's in the letter.
And that's part of our letter, very strong to, to pass?
Yep.
Because I want people to understand that currently, they're slated to, um, expire in January of 2025.
Correct.
But we need them to continue, to have them active until they're actually completed.
Yes, that's the request in the letter. And then finally, I'm happy to say that, and congratulate Elias and Cheryl and Public Works for being a recipient of the American Public Works Association Best Project of the Year Award for the, uh, El Segundo, um, well, in the transportation category for the El Segundo Improvement Project. So out of 97 entries, we, uh, our, this project did win the under 50,000 population awards, so congratulations to Elias and Cheryl and the team from El Segundo. Great work. So, and.
Mr. George, I forgot something. With tomorrow, we're in the running for the third, most business-friendly city award for the third time in eight years, if I remember correctly. So that's amazing. Whether or not we win it, the fact that we were nominated, we've won it twice in eight years and up for a third time is pretty amazing, and a testament to what staff's been doing. So, uh, would we miss if I wouldn't? Hopefully that goes well tomorrow, we'll see. Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Tonight, was there anything else?
No, that, that's it.
Okay, we are adjourned. Have a great evening.